I couldn't do anything with it.
Travels and starting in September. Oh my god, it's like.
I know. The daughter's at our school in two weeks. She has her orientation today.
What is wild, I have nieces and nephews, great nieces and nephews down in Indiana. They're already in school. They went back to school on the seventh or eighth of August. I was like, whoa, they were there like second, fourth week.
Yeah, my daughter's got a full.
Interrupt you from reading.
Oh, no. We just started. I feel like, I feel like the summary is the most important here at the top. But this always happens. I'm learning that you get something new here.
Cool, yeah.
So there's that awkward silence. We need, we need walk on music.
Nice soft jazz.
Yeah.
Or whatever the chairman wants for his walk on music. What would your song be, Mr. Fox?
I think it should be dance in music.
Only if you're gonna dance.
Yeah, well, we would.
Well, yeah, what do you dance to these days?
He misses Ellen so much.
He am I.
My computer just flipped on seven, so. Call the August eighteenth meeting of the Saratoga City Planning Commission order seven o'clock. Ask city manager for the role for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, Dan Fox. Bobby Gant.
Present.
Russ Gardner.
Here.
Stephen Mans.
Here.
Rich Hareford, excused.
Yes.
And Broker.
Here.
Mark Lachey.
I'm here.
We have a quorum. Entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes. Similarly, entertain a motion for approval of minutes from the meeting of the twenty first of July.
Don't.
Second.
All those moved, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The. Entertain a motion for approval of the. Wait a minute, I want to back up if I may. I'm out of order, I apologize. I had a note here and I missed it in my looking up and down. I'd like to add, or could have you all consider adding to the minutes from last, last month's meeting, a final note that, that sort of memorializes our. Well wishing of Cindy Osmond recognizing her long service to the, to the city and in particular to the Planning Commission. Gave her roses and it was a, a nice photo. So if that can, if someone wants to amend that, we'll retake the motion. You did.
What's that?
You, you.
Russ moved, I seconded.
Then you need to amend.
I amend the motion, amend the motion to include in the minutes recognition of Cindy Osmond's service to the public, or pardon me, to the. Planning Commission and our commission's gratitude for her service.
We're, retake the vote, those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. We now move to public comment on agenda items only. And. You, it's certainly your choice, but. Those interested in making comments related to the six sixty five Spear Street. There will be additional. Option or opportunities for comment within the public hearing, so you may want to consider that. That doesn't make a great deal of difference either way, but at least it keeps it all together. So anyone interested in making a public comment on an agenda item, please step to the podium, state your name, and the city, town, township of residence. There's another opportunity for public comment outside of the public hearing even later, so there's. Change your mind, there's plenty of opportunity. We have no old business, our new business is the six sixty five Spear Street. Public hearing regarding floor area, exceeding floor area three to one requirement. I don't know if you want to top line this.
Certainly, happy to, Mr. Chair, and we have the pleasure of having Jacob Witty, the city's attorney with us as well. He is well aware of what's happening. We did have a re, so what's submitted in your packet, packet was an outline or review by Cindy Osmond, the previous zoning administrator. Since that time for this application, we had our planning and zoning consultant review it as well. He formed an opinion, also had legal review it, and they also have an opinion, so Jake, if you don't mind, if you can just give a brief outline of the application and just our general thoughts as discussed.
Right, yeah, and I guess my opinion is not so much based on the substance of the application, which is kind of the. Report that was generated by the planning consultant, and so based on that.
I was gonna say, can I ask you to hit into the microphone, not for my benefit, but.
Is this better?
Yes.
Doing the minute sheet.
I, I suppose I could use. A novel idea. So at this juncture, for those of you that hadn't had a chance to read the planning consultant's report, it indicates that there are some deficiencies and recommends. Tabling this item until those can be remedied. Under the Planning Commission's bylaws, Article ten sets forth a mechanism to postpone a public hearing. If you look at subsection four of the bylaws, it says the commission may postpone a hearing when in its judgment the petitioner has not provided sufficient evidence on which to make a determination. And then subsection six also says for good reason, which shall be set forth in the minutes of the meeting, the commission may continue or postpone a hearing in any case of affirmative vote of a majority of the members present. So if the Planning Commission is inclined to accept the planning consultant's advice to, you know, table this request until additional information can be submitted, there's a mechanism to do that that is authorized by the bylaws. If the Planning Commission also wants to review and evaluate the application on its merits today, you know, again, the recommendation from the planning consultant isn't binding, so that would also be a permissible course of action. Unless there are any questions, that's.
No, I, I don't think there are any questions. I mean, I've seen that thing with all.
Yeah, so in short, staff's review of this item, we, we consider the application incomplete, but certainly the purview of the commission to go ahead and review the application as submitted and address any issues.
I'm, I'm sort of inclined, since we've properly noticed a public hearing, and obviously people have come here expecting a public hearing, to enter the public hearing and within that discuss. Deficiencies, needs, and then come up with a course of action out of that, which could be a number of different courses of action, so.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly a fine course of action as well.
And plus, you know, like I say, when people expect a hearing.
Yeah, certainly.
There ought to be a hearing, or at least a semblance of a hearing, a partial hearing, whatever.
Yeah.
So, okay, we're good to go then. I'm gonna declare that public hearing open, or say, it's on your. Agenda. Hearing proceeds in a very specific order, A being calling the hearing to order, which I just did. And now the summary by our stand-in zoning administrator. AKA city manager.
Yeah, thank you. So where would you like to start? With the standards for approval?
Say it again.
Where would you like to start, Mr. Chair?
Well, it, the, the second item in the public hearing is for the zoning administrator to just provide a summary of what's before. It doesn't mean. All the, all the details, but in general, what we're looking at.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. So on page four of your packet. We have an application received from Lynn Flowers and Nicholas Betts have applied for site reconfiguration additions that will exceed the three by one floor ratio area for six, six, five Spear Street. This property is located in the commercial residential R one zone district. The purpose of the memo that's been drafted by Cindy Osmond is to provide a review of the standards for the site plan review and how the ordinance relates to the application. Would you like me to walk, walk through the background?
I think that's fine, because we'll get into it. I'd like to invite. For public comment in order, the. The applicants. To provide their summary, their overview, or whatever, so we have an idea or a better idea of what this is all about. So. That's, you don't have, you don't have.
If you could stop to the.
Yeah, for the record, your name.
Dr. Nicholas Betts.
And address, please.
Six, six, five Spear Street.
Thank you.
So, um, I don't sound like an American, but I'm American. I've been here for forty years, so I know how, I know how most things work here. Even though we're getting used to how things work in this town, which I don't fully understand and what's all the political undertones that's going on at the moment, which I'm sure everyone on this table knows. So obviously, we've been caught in the transition between Cindy and, and Ryan. And it seems to me that there's more eyes on this one than there probably was on the last one. You know, I had no idea why Cindy's been fired. I, sorry, resigned. I don't want to be Cindy's resigned, but it seems that I was the first one to come up, and I was the first one to get looked at under microscope. To me, it seems a bit unfair. So unfair in that case, because all we did was follow the instructions we were given by Cindy. I was in here virtually every week. My architect came in, followed her instructions. We followed the instructions that Cindy said to the letter. Do you need anything else? Can we give you anything more? No, this is fine. Are you sure? Do you need anything else? We, I, I made sure that everything was there that was needed. I spoke to our neighbors. My neighbors have been on board with this since the day I've moved in. I invited them over and introduction to the architect, I introduction to the contractors. I'm open about what I'm doing. There's no secret, there's no hidden agenda or anything. I want to be friends with our neighbors. I know, I don't want to be on the wrong side of them. I do everything possible to love this town, because we came in on love. I love my daughter, and that's why we came here. We moved from California to come to Midwest town so she could have a, a great upbringing in a small town. And this really upsets me personally, because it seems there's division, so much division going on nationally, it seems there's division around neighborhood now over something that I tried so hard not to have division on, anyway. So. So we seem to be caught up in the middle of it. What we're trying to do is fight a home for a child. We live in a very old house, eighteen seventy-three, the barn is. It's a famous house, Bert Tilström used to live there. And I'm sure many people on this table know who Bert Tilström was, like Kuuk, Oli and Fran. He lived there many years. He, his studio is on the left-hand side. That's his studio. He worked up and created things. There's even pictures of Gin Henson there, working together, creating permit, for goodness sake. So for that little area, we're looking at historical part of America, right? I bought this building thinking I was gonna do the good thing by maintaining it and keep part of Sagatuck history right there. Everyone thought I was gonna knock it down and build a brand-new home and, and things, but maybe I think differently, but I don't think history should be destroyed that easily, especially from an important person. So my idea was to just renovate it in the first place, and then we could live there, but it has so many issues, mainly because our neighbors around us, particularly the person behind us, all the stormwater flows into us, because they were built after our house. Our house is, as I said, eighteen seventy-five. So all the water flows into our house, and it, and it's tilted it, it's, it's causing some mold, it's causing lots of problems. So discussing, even with my neighbor's suggestion was to move it forward and put it on a basement away from all the water. Yeah, okay, that's great, that's great, let's do that. But it's still an old house, right? Still all the problems of an old house, and I've got a young, yeah, yeah, it still smells, it's still moldy, it's still, it's still not great. So we want to add an addition to it that isn't moldy and smelly and is, and it's new, and it has newer appliances, the electricity works, et cetera, et cetera. Right, and that's what we're trying to do. And, and I know we're not gonna get into depth here, but basically this is about love the town, love my neighbors and love my daughter. And we seem to be caught up in something that unfortunately we caught up in. The questions, if anyone's got any questions for me?
Well, I, I don't know. Yes, follow me.
So if you move the structure forward, and you're talking about adding a new addition to make it livable, what are you gonna do with the part you moved forward if it's not livable?
Well, it will be livable, because we're having it remodeled. So what we're going to do, we're having, and when this first suggested to me, I went, this is crazy. Right, so there's, I think it's called Laraway, or, and they lift homes, right, and they move them forward. And so, so we're thinking, our plans are to have a full basement there, like lift it up, see all the damage, fix all the damage beneath it, drop it on, you know, with, of course, building codes, we've got to go with the, et cetera, et cetera, but without contractor, you know. And then add an addition to where, because we're leaving the studio behind. The only reason I left the studio behind was because I thought it would be, as an historical value, I don't care about the studio, I don't need it. It's not me, but I just thought it had a historical reference. We spoke to Eric at the Stock Society too, as a historical reference, it seemed sacrilege to tear it down, right? And so we can leave that there at my own expense, cheap for me to get rid of it, drop that down, and then a small extension to where that was. And then in addition, we're having an extension on the front, which can be more than modern, modern-ish livable home, rather than having the old barn. So what I'm trying to do is the contrast between having like a, like the old barn, which is still visible and new, so it has, has the history and the character of Sagatuck, and then a new livable home in front, and I want to make the new livable home almost invisible. So it's like narrow, and it's an L shape, so it's gonna go up, and it's gonna be wood on the outside, it's gonna be reflective windows, because we're covered by trees, right? You can't even see our place from Google Earth, trees everywhere, so it's surrounded by trees, and so it'd almost be invisible. And we're thirty feet off the, what the street is, in the middle of the street, we're forty feet, so it's a long way in, you know. And so we try to please everyone by doing this. And I taught to everyone, you know, how, what can we do? How can we please you? How can we do this? And I've made promises to people. When this passes, I will still work with you, even people who are against it, I still work with you to make you happy, to get what you want, or what reasonable, right? Now to do that. I'm not, I'm not here to change things, not here to make enemies, I'm here to give my daughter the best life she can have. And the idea of where neighbors are already fighting is really upsetting, you know, because I thought all friends and neighbors are fighting, and I thought we all got together, and not, it's not like I'm doing anything crazy. I'm building a house, for goodness sake, right? That's it. And I think one of the issues is Cindy submitted the plans, and they weren't full plans. Even I was, even I was going, really? So I think that we have a new set of plans drawn up, which is gonna address many of the issues that, that people, people brought up. And from elevations to height setbacks, et cetera. And to me, I think it's like full details, right? And if there's anything that needs to be done, we'll do it, right? We'll do it. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing here to me. I don't, I don't understand it, to tell the truth, right? I don't understand why, why people. Some people. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I have a question if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I don't know if this references the politics you're talking about, but as you stand here today, you are representing to us that this will always remain, as far as you own it, a single-family dwelling, that it will not be separated into potentially more than one.
No.
Unit for Airbnb or otherwise?
It's got one set, one utilities for everything, it's gonna be one tax for everything. You know, it's just an old frigging house that we don't want to constantly live in an old house anymore. We'd like, love to have that house, a new house, and I don't want to knock the house down. But I want a nice new house to live in, for when Julia gets older, she wants, she thinks it's clean out, it's a magical house or puppets, right?
So under our ordinance, for example, we, it, it needs to have only one primary egress and, and, and basically one front door instead of two front doors. You're planning on just one main entrance for your house?
Yeah, right, and then there's access ways where, obviously, there's a back entrance, I mean, you've got to have a back.
Sure, you guys have back doors.
Right, so, yeah, there's not two separate entrances. You know, there's gonna be, no, there's gonna be an entrance, but, because that's just a historical way it's done, but we can close that off, so it's a fake entrance, you know, just, just for the, just for, to look at it. So, that's fine, thank you. Yeah, but there's no separate entrances, one family home, that's it, for us.
Anybody else on the commission?
So, other comments?
Pardon me? Well, yeah. If there are those wishing to make opposing comments, you may feel free. Before that happens, just for the record. The. The portrayal of the city or the authorities, if you will, in turmoil isn't quite accurate. We have, we have one new commission member, but other than that, the same people. Hang on, I'm not gonna debate with them, just, I want to point this out for the audience. The rest of the commission, with the exception of Richard Hareford, who's not here tonight, but the rest of us here have been here throughout. Time described, so that hasn't changed. As to. The requirements. For submission. Those are crystal clear from virtually, and there, there's always some room for discussion, I suppose, but those are crystal clear, and where there are gaps in this submission. Whether Cindy pointed them out or didn't point them out is immaterial. The gaps are there, so. I don't know how or why Cindy would have missed them, but. Any, any ten people will look at the list of requirements and see that each of, this is not some trumped-up list, these are elements that are not there. A, a request for a special use permit is a very serious request in this town, maybe everywhere, but for sure in this town. Because if that is granted, or as it is granted, in whatever form it is granted, that is a forever decision. That goes with the property forever, where, you know, we all can get wiped out in a plane, get in the building, and that's gonna go on forever. So we take that very, that responsibility very seriously, and we take. In a small town like Sagatuck, we take. Neighbor's comments very seriously, because as you described, we all gotta look together, so I just, I just don't want to leave the impression here that. The changes you described, Cindy resigning and, and, and Ryan being willing to stand in and step in and getting a lawyer involved, just so everybody's sure that everything's on the up and up. All fine and dandy, but that's not turmoil, believe me. That was my, so, anyway. So if there are additional, I should say, if there are additional supporting comments, comments from the public in support of the project, please feel free to stand, yes, sir, come to the podium.
Yes.
Tell us who you are. I have to do the same thing.
Oh. My name's Mark Shirey. I'm, I'm potentially the builder for this project. I live sixty-four, forty-seven, one hundred and fortieth in Lake Town Township. Longtime resident of the area. Yeah, the. I have questions about. You know, the, the shortcomings on, on the application, but I can, I can research that. What I would like to do is, you know, just give a little bit more overview of the process. You know, the house, the existing house is. Is. You know, the, the shell is in good shape, you know, aside from. Aside from the floor system. So this company, Laraway, they're house movers, there's, I think, four in the, in the state, and they're, they just happen to be down by Pullman. What, what they'll do. Is they'll come in and excavate around the house so they can get underneath of it, and then put some, you know, a bunch of supporting. Members underneath, usually I-beams, steel I-beams, and then, and then to lift the house up, and then. Another company will come in and put the basement in, and then the house, Laraway moves the house forward. You know, and if you've never seen it, on that day, I suggest, you know, going up and standing on, on Spear Street so you can watch, because it's, it's, it's quite impressive. So then gets moved forward, and then, and then gets sat back, sat down on the new foundation. I'll back up a little bit. The, the, the floor issues, potential floor issues, most likely. That, that will, that'll be taken care of either when the house is up on cribbing before it's moved to the basement or after it's sat down on, on top of the basement. You know, and then. And then whatever, whatever, whatever other repair work that needs to happen would, would happen at that time. And then, and then the occupants will be able to move back into the house, you know, because, you know, the, yeah. You know, it may or may not be obvious, but, you know, all the utilities have to be. Have to be disconnected for the house to move. So then after that, you know, I, I think Nick's calling it phase two, is the addition up front. You know, and, and I, I, I saw the, the. Site plan. Come across the screen, and I actually had a copy of it that I was able to review previously, and the. You know, the, the architect has laid out the old house and the new house to be within. you know, the, the architect has laid out the old house and the new house to be within, you know, to, to be inside of the setback requirements. So, you know, as, as far as that goes, I, you know, I, you know, to me, I, I, I think it's just a, that's a, a no brainer on whether or not they could, whether or not this project could go forward. And then also the, I just lost my thought process. The, yes, there, yeah, it has, it has the, it has a setback. Oh, the, the last thing I wanted to comment on is the, the lot coverage. I know in Sagatuck, there's a lot coverage requirement. I don't, you know, it's been a while, so I don't know what that percentage is. But the architect did an analysis of the, the lot size versus lot coverage. And, you know, it's, it's tight, but, you know, the project is going to be inside of that percentage. You know, so, you know, with, with that stuff in mind, you know, you know, clear up whatever's deficiencies are there and should be able to go forward.
Okay. We'll deliberate and chat amongst ourselves and call you back up if it's helpful at some point. Any other people, individuals coming to support this project? Opposing comments? Important.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Jim Baugh. I live at 638 Spear Street and I live directly across from 665 Spear Street. I, I look right at it. These are my friends and neighbors. We've discussed this project over a long period of time and we've never come to agreement. I'm opposed to this project for all the reasons that I put in the letter that I sent to each of you, so I'm not going to go over that. What I would mention though is we've all seen the drawing of the two people standing, looking at a number on the ground. The number is a six. One person says, well, I see it, it's a six. And the person standing on the other side says, well, I see it, it's a nine. So they're debating their own personal point of view and we all have those. In this case though, the, those two people are debating the wrong question. The question should be, what did the author intend that number to be? Not how do I happen to see it, but how did the author intend that number to be? And my interpretation of the ordinance, which again gets my bias in here, I understand that, is that the ordinance was written very specifically to keep the character of Sagatuck so that we don't turn into a Birmingham, Michigan with McMansions all over the place. Houses crowded in and things just overwhelming the neighborhood. And that's, that's the way I see this project. What you have is the barn move forward, which is good. All that phase one fits right in, seems to be mostly compliant. There are some issues there with that. And when you move the barn forward and you put the second story on it, you've got 2,380 square feet of floor space, first floor, second floor. Because there's now a full second floor. They've bumped the building out to replace the studio that was left behind. So you've got a home right there that has 2,379 square feet. I, I understand there's, you can argue the numbers a little bit one way or the other, but that's roughly what it is. And then you add to that, and you call it an addition, another 3,604 square feet. So the phase two is 3,600 square feet in addition to the others, which brings you to 5,983 square feet, not counting the studio. If you then say, okay, well, we're going to put a garage under the phase one, you back out 24 by 24, that's 576. You're still left with 5,407 square feet of floor space, which to me would qualify as a McMansion. And I, I figured this out because we're here for a floor area ratio problem and nowhere in the package did I see, here's what's allowed and here's what we've got. So if you take point three times the lot area, what's allowed is 3588. What we've got is 5407 if you back out the garage and, and don't have the studio. So we've got 150%. We're not a couple of feet over. We're not close. We didn't even give it the college try. We're way over. It's, to me, it's a McMansion. It doesn't fit in with our neighborhood. It doesn't fit in with the character of the entire residential district. And in addition to the other things that I stated, I personally see it as a two-family home, his in front and hers in back. It's not a single-family detached home. That's, that's my take on it. I guess the lawyers and the zoning administrator will have their own rule on that. So I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Please come forward.
Good evening. Laura Godfrey, 550 Francis. I appreciate all your work. Sometimes these things are very complex for the neighbors. And I'm sort of right in the middle. We've been watching this property since these people moved in. We're happy to have them here. But this barn has been in some disarray for, for a while as they try to sort it out. And I, I think that we're all looking for improvement on this property. There's no question that my husband and I and our family supports improvement on this property. Looking to you then for careful review of the details that are submitted. It doesn't look to me like it's an official site plan. It looks like some very interesting drawings. So if you, as the planning commission, feel that this is a complete submittal, and it sounds as if you're not quite there yet, certainly would balance the need for improvement over your rigor in studying what's been submitted and then asking for what still is missing. And it looks like there might be something still missing. Personally, I think the historic influence of this property is overstated. I have a different perspective on history. I'm looking for more deeper historical value than this. I'm more interested in property values, what this property does currently and what it will do, what it could do, irregardless of who lives there. I personally would tear it down and start over. I've told him that. But however we get there, to improve the property in any fashion that is within the realm of your responsibilities would be most appreciated and I do thank you for your work.
Yeah. Anyone else, yes, sir?
Dave Mosini, 560 Francis. And I vowed quite a few years ago that I was going to avoid coming back into this room after all my years of service, but I see Russ has circled his way back around to being on the planning commission. And so I come with a couple of different perspectives because I've obviously sat in your seat and understand the challenges that you have. And so I'm going to just say this two ways. I'm in support of the improvement of the property because he and I have had discussions about it and I understand he's got challenges and whatever he can do to make that happen, I, I can support that. What I can't be in favor of is more of a history of the planning commission dating back to about 1977 when I came home from my last year of college and had a block-long, three-story condo already up behind my property at 233 Cover. And when I inquired, how could that happen? I was told, well, the good news is it could have been six stories. And I said, well, six, three, it really doesn't matter because three is going to block pretty much everybody's view on this side of that property and not to mention that we got the bad side of the building, not the good side of the building. And so that evolution continued and Russ knows the 28-foot line from the street line versus the 28-foot line from the property adjacent to the, where the building started. That had a couple of different variations. And the point of all this is the planning commission evolved and continued to improve the zoning that we have that protects the community as a whole so that people follow the guidelines of the ordinance. And unless there's some hardship that takes them to the zoning board of appeals, I think that really is the feeling that I have as, when I sat on the planning commission of let's just follow the guidelines and make sure that we follow the rules and then work with the property owner in question as much as we can to make something happen that benefits them, but retains that value that we put in everybody's, the trust that we put in that you're going to follow the rules that are in place. And so I know it's a challenge. I know sometimes there's not a lot of property left to develop and people always come with creative ideas on how they can best maximize the use of that waterfront property or that lot that they have that doesn't quite fit the size of the building that they want to put on it. But I think I would be more inclined to try to help people build within the framework of the ordinance rather than try to see how far we can step outside that framework. Because that's, I think that hurts everybody. Thank you.
The other opposing comments? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kimbo, 550 Spear Street. And I want to reiterate what some of my other neighbors have said. We are thrilled that they want to improve the property. So there's no question about that. When I heard that there was a special land use permit or whatever this is called, I don't know, nobody has explained to me what's special about the land use because it's a residential property now and it's going to continue to be a residence. So if at some point that could be explained, I, I would appreciate that. And then my only other comment is just echoing what some of the others have said. I just want to see the property developed within the guidelines so that it's within the setback that's established for, you know, new residences. And also that the size of the property doesn't overwhelm the lot.
Any others opposing? There's also a category here for general comments. Usually people are talked out by this point, but I, I often, general comment, anybody wants to? Sure. Please step to the podium to do it. So that's so it's recorded.
Yes. So I followed everything, and I'm going to repeat this, everything I was told to do by Cindy. You know, even, even above what I was told to do. Because I 100% know I wanted not to be in this position where I was going outside an ordinance. And even if you look at this, which is, which isn't the plan that I submitted, because I submitted a revised plan two days ago that I wanted you guys to see, which has more detail. It lays out the plan a lot better than this one. This one isn't complete. This is wrong. You know, this doesn't set up the heights of the building. It doesn't do the grade, where the grade is, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's hard for people to understand what's going on because you don't have the information. You know, because Cindy submitted it really, not putting on Cindy, by the way, is the fact that I, I, that wasn't what I wanted. I wanted something else. And I've got it here. Should you guys want to see the revised ones? I gave to Ryan two days ago, hoping you guys would have had it. So I don't know you want. I don't know how you feel about that.
We, we, we can't, we can't review a substantially different plan tonight in this meeting.
Okay, yeah.
And not have had it open to everyone else in the room and however many people looked at this online and whatever. So that's not an option. But that, there are options, but that's not one.
Okay, so seeing as how I don't think this is a plan that I would accept that I wanted, right? And I don't see that this should pass anyway, to tell the truth, because it doesn't give you guys enough information to make a decision. I wouldn't pass it. So if I gave you guys the correct plans and also addressing everyone's issues here they brought up, with the reasonable ones, then, then I'd like to have the plan reviewed again. And we'll address any issues or problems regarding it. Even with this one, everything is within setback. Everything. There's nothing that's not within setback. That's fine. You know, I, I read it and I, I'm not an expert in reading this, but I can read. And so, and with my architect and with Cindy, everyone knows that's in the setbacks. It's some of the other issues like the grading. We need a grading plan. No, we don't. But I like to, I would like to show stormwater runoff because one of the main problems we have is, oh, he's not doing this is because we get flooded, right, from the other neighbors. I understand the other neighbors close to me be concerned about being flooded if I do something like that. 100% they should have a right to, to be about that. But the rest of it, trying to, I don't want to put people who bend the rules to my, to the way I think. I'm not trying to do that. There's no rule bending in this. There's no rule bend. You can look through everything. You see that I'm bringing it to the book, to where the ordinance. And if we, and we come to you guys, because I understand, because it wasn't point three to one, I guess. I learned that two days ago. So that's the reason we came here. I thought everyone went to planning, by the way. Show my innocent ignorance. So, yeah, so I, I would like to put the plan again together. So you, so everyone here and our neighbors can see what it looks like for real. Without having a negative comment here, which like cuts me off because I don't, yeah, I didn't realize what was going to be submitted here. I only got the package two days ago.
Any applicant has the, where the opportunity and choice to withdraw an application and resubmit it at a later time. That's, I don't control that. We don't control that. You control.
Oh, I do.
If you withdraw.
Does that have any negative effect? Until there's no negative effect?
You can't unsee what you've seen, but that doesn't mean that.
Another black mark or?
No, no. I think, well, maybe out of turn here. But in these comments, pretty much overall, in virtually all of the written comments we've received from at least five neighbors. I think my count is correct. I can name them if we need to go through.
Yeah, I, I've spoken to majority of our neighbors individually.
The common, one common theme, there are others. One common theme is that there's not enough information here.
Yes.
This is not, or this is not clear.
I agree.
To the, to the, to you who mentioned, why are we here for a special land use? We're here for a special land use because the assertion was that the project was going, was going to exceed the
Floor area ratio.
Floor area.
Ratio.
We're limitation. And you may think otherwise, but you cannot, it's not in here. I mean, I looked for it all the way through. There's, there are lots of numbers written here, there and whatever, but I don't know where the numbers came from. I don't know who wrote them. I don't know if they're part of it or whatever. But you, so you can't, we can't even evaluate this on that. And that's not the only thing by far that we look at, but that's why it's here.
Yeah, I only found out, only found out two days ago why it was, why we had to come here. I didn't realize. I thought everyone thing to, went through there. I was not advised correctly, let's say. I was from all the wars. I didn't know we were going to be special. I thought everyone, everyone went through planning. You know, every city I've lived in, everything went through planning. I just thought we were going through planning.
If you're, well, there's lots of, lots of misunderstandings to what the planning commission does, I assure you, amongst even some of us. But I will say that, I don't mean this to be a quid pro quo, but if, if you choose to withdraw your application, and even if you don't, we'll provide you with the, the detailed list of shortcomings of what's there that
Yeah.
the planning commission has received from our consultant and free to dispute or, or whatever, but you'll then have everything that we've, we have.
That's what I was hoping.
For the next time around.
That was hoping what I said before, before we can get to this stage where the neighbors are pissed off. And, and we get to this stage where I never in a million years wanted to be because out of not, not in my doing, right? I, I ask for not to be, have this. The worst thing I wanted was to have this.
I think, again, this is a subjective comment, but I think you're on fairly good ground in terms of, normally when neighbors are upset, they're like, wouldn't upset and a fox on your house and all the rest of it. Your neighbors are supportive.
Well, it's not me.
Of a project that would be within the scope of what's, pretty much what's allowed by the, by the ordinances. So I think getting from here to there should not be that difficult.
I love.
It is a challenge. It's a challenge because of this moving houses and I'm going to build this now and I'm going to build this later. That's, that poses a real challenge for us.
See, here's another thing. You know, I was told by Cindy, I go, can I like do, do this building first? And then that, when that's going to get building permits for this, get that and then apply for this one, building permit, this one later. And I was told, yes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. So the main thing I want to do is, is, is why I wanted the site plan altogether is to, so I don't screw up on the first one. Say phase one. And so I can't do anything else on it. Like, you already messed it up, right? You can't do anything else, screwed yourself. So that's why I really wanted to do it. And where we build that second one, I don't know. You know, but I want the option of building that second one. That's all. Now, I may not have enough money. You know, where the stock market's going, I probably won't, and inflation. But, um, but yeah, I, so what I'm seeing, the underlying, sorry, the underlying thing I'm saying now, I should read. I, I, I should withdraw my application now. And I work together with the city or with planning. They were just showing me the shortcomings of the application. I already know a bunch, by the way, of that. And then we'll come to, next time we come to you, it's going to be fully laid out and I shouldn't, hopefully there's been minimal things. I'm, we probably will be asking for the point three to one. You know, that's why we come to you guys. That's one of the things that that's one of the things, it's hard for us. We can't get out of that because if you look at the, can I just, can I just point to the maps?
Absolutely.
So if you.
Go ahead, take a look.
So a large chunk is taken out, taken out here for Jim next door. Yeah. For, for Jim. And not for Jim to have his garage here, right? He owned both. Right. And then Jim wanted to build this and he decided he wanted to keep this. And so they did a lot division. So we've got this crazy culture, right? And that's what messed up really our, our lot coverage. So it would have been maybe different if we wouldn't have had this. But it is what it is, right? But that, that's why we're running into some issues because of that.
But to be clear, the F A V is a volumetric limitation, as I understand it.
You mean the F A R?
F A R, sorry. Is a, is a volumetric limitation, which is the real issue here, not the lot coverage.
But don't they go hand in hand?
No.
No.
No, they're two separate values. One, one measures how much space, how much bulk.
Right.
The building takes up.
Yep.
You're over on that.
That's the farm.
Dramatically. The other measures how much grass effectively, how much unproven service.
When's the footprint, right? And the other ones.
And when you're describing is the footprint, this is, this is volume.
Is, is, is the box element, as I'm going to call it, based on livable floor area?
I don't know, I'd have to go into the.
From my understanding, yes.
Basically.
Two-story.
Not even sure about garages.
Still only the floor space.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, we, we shouldn't design this tonight.
No, I'm not trying to design it. I'm just trying to explain that you've got two things to, minimum of two things to sell for and a bunch of other things, all of which will give you or regive you based on the, the project being withdrawn and submitted at a later date.
Right.
If that's your decision.
Well, let's do that. What would be the time period?
There's, you can submit it whenever you want. We meet once a month.
Okay.
And there's, we.
We just need time to announce a new public hearing.
Pardon me?
We need time to announce a new public hearing.
That's correct.
Yeah, you, you can't just show up at City Hall today and we meet tonight. We meet the published schedule for the, for the meetings.
That's fine.
And then they have to be noticed, whatever, two days ahead of time. So.
Looking for a month, something like that, just to.
Well, a month is going to be the best you're going to do because that's next time we meet.
Okay, so like, okay, two months, a month or two months then.
Up to you.
No one's going to retire or anything. My last words to Cindy was please do not leave or retire before we get this done. And then let's see, I know she's not here. I sort of maybe foreshadowed that. So, yeah, I think that's what I want to do if, if, if I'm allowed to do that, would agreeable to do that.
That'd be September 15th.
Is that a lucky day?
The next one.
I do just want to confirm with Ryan, do we have a 30-day notice for the hearing?
It's a four-week notice period. So depending on how quickly you can redesign and resubmit.
Well, we've already done most of it. I just want to put a storm drain system on it just to, even though we don't, from my knowledge, we don't have to do that. But we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can't err by providing too much. One of your neighbors is very concerned with the health of trees and the location of significant trees on a property, including the water area of the area, the root.
So, yeah, I, I've already had, I've already come out from Bartlett, Ryan Rose. He's already been out. He's going to supervise it. He's going to put where, where all the fences go around the trees.
I get that, but I, that's between you and him, between you and the commission is the demonstration what that is so that it can be determined and measured and checked against enforcement and so on and so forth. That, I don't doubt that you've, you know.
It's, it's already started fertilizing the trees now, right? So.
But there, again, location, lighting, there are all, there are a number of things, and I'm going to give you this.
Okay.
As at least a starting point to begin to work with your people to figure out how to get this thing laid out so that.
Yeah, and I thought it was like, I'm away, I was away, I turned, I was working and I think it was all done and and then I'll find out the summit's miscommunication. And it's not my fault. None of this is my fault. I tried to do exactly as the city told me, or you represented as you told me. That's it. That's it. I did everything Cindy told me to do. And my architect did everything Cindy told me to do. That's it. Right? Back me up on that. We went to extremes not to annoy neighbors, went to extreme, everything she wanted, we, we gave immediately. It's not me trying to bend the rules. I'm just a bit frustrated. We've been caught up in this and it's not our fault. That's all. Thanks.
Based on that, I'm going to we're still within the hearing, I suppose. I'm going to close the hearing and then we can discuss amongst ourselves and ruling on the disposition. All righty. Public hearing is now closed and the conversation will mostly take place amongst us up here. So feel free.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it sounds as if, pardon, it sounds to me like the applicant is wanting to withdraw and resubmit. I believe, given what we have seen here tonight and some of the things that we have, that at least my opinion as part of the commission would be to accept that and to wait for the new submission, so postpone. Any decisions on special orders?
Anyone else?
Agreed.
Yeah, I would be with that as well. And I want to thank Mr. Betts for being here this evening and talking about this. This is I believe all the information is here for us to get a good site, site plan for us to approve. I mean, I don't see there's, there's just some things that have to be worked out. And this is not a negative, in my opinion. This is a positive that everybody is giving us input. You're here this evening to speak on behalf of the project. And we just, this is, this is, this is not out of the normal for the planning commission to go through this process. This is not abnormal.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, do you want to step out? You're going to go back and forth.
No.
Yeah, just, so thank you for being here this evening and for your willingness to speak to us. Thank you.
I, I agree as well. That makes sense based on everything we've heard. And I just, one comment that I feel like I'll make for the benefit, this is purely for the benefit of the public, those listening and those here in person, is that if I, it sounds like perhaps it was not adequately conveyed through this process that we, we look at the ordinances when we're reviewing a special land use, we follow the factors laid out in the ordinance to review the special land use and determine whether or not it's appropriate based on those factors. It's not a rubber stamp. It's not a given that it'll be provided. It's a case by case review based on the information before us, the application before us and the information the factors that we have to follow in the, in the ordinance. So I just wanted to clarify that. I feel like that may have been missed. That's.
And one of those factors is, an important one of those factors in this city, particularly in the residential areas, is the effect on what's kind of generally provided as public welfare, safety and so on and so forth, which is where neighbors' opinions have real traction, particularly if they're all of a, I mean, if it's substantial. Because the effect on properties around the subject property is a consideration against which we can, we apply some measure of judgment. So but largely exactly what Ann said is correct. Ark, anything?
Uh, no, thank you.
I will entertain a motion substantially as you laid out, Steve.
I make a motion to I guess, we'll table it or.
No, don't table it. I think we.
I make a motion that we accept his withdrawal of the application and for it to be reviewed on a future submission.
Second.
This, I think, is a roll call.
Dan Fox?
Yes.
Bobby Gant?
Yes.
Russ Gardner?
Yes.
Stephen Mans?
Yes.
For Chairford's Excuse, Ann Booker?
Yes.
Mark Lachey?
Yes.
Okay. We have the communication mentioned here is the letter from Jim Selma, which was in the packet. There are additional letters, copies of which are available to anyone who wants them.
Mr. Chair, a question of just procedure. Not only Mr. Selman's letter, but the other letters, do those become a part of the record?
Yes.
Without formally doing anything that they become a part of the record?
It probably should be, but it's been standard practice that they're immediately included in the packet, anything, particularly this, anything really. Oftentimes we get one, one of us or another will get a letter. In this case, I think every single one of them came to all of us. So that's clearly a matter of public record and should be and will be.
Thank you, sir.
As will the as will the note that came in kind of late from
The Sheridan's.
Horizon that was in, was on your plate there that we're going to give them. So.
Thank you.
And that'll be retained regardless of what happens going forward. So we have a motion. And we have, we passed the motion. Reports, we have reports of officers and committees. Lean on my, my favorite committee. But I would like to get one thing under, under that as a follow-up from our last meeting and the discussion that was mentioned properly in the minutes from last month's meeting. Just purely for information, I write it for information, but I'm going to pass this out for information related to short-term rentals and possible legislation, state legislation. We need one more. And you can read it for yourself, but my he basically talks about the need for fairness, blah, 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 and wants seems to support the states, one of the state bills, and apparently there are multiple such bills. One of them that, that removes from city zoning any, any possibility of short-term rentals being zoned out or excluded from a, from a residential zone, except. He says, that does not affect any of the, the city's rights to, to legislate by ordinance and control everything, parking and noise and fumes or whatever else it is. And he seems to suggest that he thinks that would be fair. What I miss in this is the case for doing what he's suggesting, for having that possibility. I mean, to me, zoning is about what the local community wants the local community to be. And so I don't see how having that in the hands of the, or removing that from the, from the local jurisdiction operates in that, in that interest.
I guess. To me, it's very conflicted because he talks about it. Here they, they're just trying to prevent short-term residents from being zoned out. But yet, when you read the bill, it says that you can't treat them differently than any other resident, any other single-family homes that rely in that residential district. So.
It's a basic conflict.
Yeah, there's a conflict in his own.
He says you can't treat them differently, but you, why, why it says who? Why not?
Then, but in here, then in here, he's saying that you, municipalities still have the ability to set to set the. So that's where, when I got it, I just kind of like put it aside and said, the letter didn't make any sense.
But that's what, and I know the mayor spoke at something or banded together with a bunch of other mayors and.
Correct, because there's the other House bill I had the.
So maybe for the benefit of the audience, this is a letter from Eric Nussbitte, our Michigan senator, in regards to communication regarding Senate Bill 4722, which is seeking to regulate short-term rentals. And the state has indicated an interest in passing this bill and limiting the local municipalities' efforts to control short-term rentals. And there's some conflict between the letter that we read, that Dan has received and what we're reading in the bill. So that's, that's the discussion.
And the battle.
House Bill 4722, excuse me, misspoke.
The battle will certainly be joined probably till we're all long gone, but public, we, we have another session for public comment. If you want to comment, opportunity is here. Three minutes on any subject, the subject or any subject. Comments from the commissioners. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually, more questions than comments.
For the record, sorry.
Your name.
Your name again.
Mark Shirey, 6447, 140th. S H I R E Y. If you get it wrong, don't feel bad. My third grade teacher had both my sisters before me and still got it wrong.
I never had that problem with my last name, so.
It's gotten used to it over the years. The first question, the the, the, the square footage coverage. I'm a little confused. Is, is the, is the square footage, is that the footprint of the house or is that you know, the multiple floors? That's, that's my first question. And of course, you know, all this stuff might be able to go to the zoning commissioner and ask.
I'm going to suggest that that's going to be a more productive course for you to, to visit directly. And, and some of that is addressed, I'll give, we can give you two copies of this.
Okay.
For him as well, which lists a bunch of what they consider shortcomings in the, in the application.
And it, um, and the, well, that, that'll cover all the other questions except for this one. Where, where would I request for copies of the letters from the neighbors?
With the.
City clerk.
That would be, yeah.
Okay.
City manager. That would be fine.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we'll go out for commissioner comments. Mark, what do you think? First time out? What do you give it? C minus, C plus? I know you're a tough grader.
I, I give the chair an A plus. No, I, I.
I'm asking for that. I know how good I am.
Um, I, I think we're I think these, this is from first blush, this is a group of serious people who really love this community and care about it. And I think that's what we're here for. So you know, I, I happen to live on the hill. I live through three blocks approximately from where your, your house is. So when you talk about impact, when you talk about impact on, on the, on the larger community, property values. So when you talk about impact, when you talk about impact on the on the on the larger community, property values, that kind of thing. You know, it it does affect beyond adjacent properties. Otherwise, no, I I it was pleasure meeting all of you this evening. Um, and I look forward to serving. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity.
So my only comment is actually a housekeeping one, which is that I will not be in attendance next month. I I realized. That I'm going to actually be out of the country next month on vacation, so.
For you.
Yes, I'm looking forward to that, but I'm sorry at conflicts of the meeting, but I'll be back in October.
Your attendance has been fine. Russ?
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
None.
No, appreciate it.
Good. I have nothing to add. We'll make sure we get. I don't know, I don't think I got anything you didn't get, but I'll check with you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, we gotta have motions.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, give me a second. All those in favor. Oppose, no. Stand adjourned.
I'll lose this immediately and then. I said, I'll lose this immediately and that's not, and then. Thanks, Mark. So, but I think the off topic came to that good place. It's like, I think it's all.
Yeah.
Where are you going?
I'm going to France.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm very excited. I have a friend getting married there, actually.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Have you been to France before?
I have. It's been a really long time and I've only been to Paris. So we're doing, we're going to fly into Paris and then. Normandy, we'll do Paris, Normandy, then we'll go down to Cognac for the wedding and then we'll.
If you can do Ross Michelle in Normandy, it's really cool.
Oh, I'm going to write this down. Second, I know I won't remember it. Okay, what is it called?
M O N T.
M O N T.